Good evening. It is 6:30. I call this regular meeting to order. Please rise and plug the mic. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Good evening, House School Board members, district staff, and community members. As a reminder to us all, our mission is to equip all students with the knowledge and skills to empower them to achieve their dreams and full potential while becoming responsible for the student and academic world. Our first item for tonight's agenda is adoption of the agenda. Are there any questions prior to a motion being made for the agenda before you? All right, so no questions. Is there a call to motion for the November 10th, 2025 meeting? Is there a second? Any discussion on that motion? No discussion at all? If there are motions signed by by saying aye and raising your hand?
Aye.
Motion prevails. Thank you. Agenda item three, consideration of visitors. I have no slips. Vanessa, do you have any? No consideration of visitors for tonight, or we'll move on?
Don't be disappointed.
Tell me there isn't a con.
Move on to item four, consent agenda. There are four items in tonight's consent agenda. Any requests to pull them or pull any item before we have a motion? All right, seeing none. Is there a call to motion to approve the consent agenda?
So amazing.
Is there a second? Any discussion on that motion? No discussion. This will be a roll call vote. So first, signify by saying aye if you support, nay if you do not. Mr. Humphrey?
Aye.
Ms. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Shorlock?
Aye.
Ms. Bachman-Quinn?
Aye.
Mr. Working?
Aye.
Ms. West?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Motion prevails. Thank you. Moving on to item five, information items and reports. Again, we have a few tonight, so please hold questions. No, the report is done. No one has time to ask questions. The first one is student council. Ms. Humphrey, you're up. Thank you for being here.
Thank you guys for having me. Once again, the student council of St. Francis High School is very honored to be invited to this school board meeting. Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, Mr. Superintendent, Board, Cabinet, constituents, and all those online. So far, in student council, we've just returned back from our Craigins Fall Leadership Return. And so from that, we learned a lot of valuable leadership skills, got to bond and communicate with a lot of different student councils from all around the state and all around the surrounding areas. And we have to learn a lot of lessons and a lot of opportunities that we hope to bring to our school district very soon. However, some of the things that we are currently doing within our school and within our school district as a student council is that we are currently starting out our food drive. So at the front of our high school, and I believe at some of the exit, we have shopping carts, and we're hoping to fill 10 shopping carts at least of non-perishable food items by the end of November, I believe. Otherwise, there will be more information posted to our social media soon about that, as we are just getting it up in the works as of this past meeting last Friday. And otherwise, the other things that I know of that the student council is running is that on December 12th, we will host our annual community night. There will be a girls' varsity basketball game, and we hope that you will all join us there. There should be a Santa, and there will be different activities for little kiddos, such as decorated cookies and games for all the different family members, youth, and community members. And otherwise, other than that, we have nothing really set currently, as we are just getting back from our Craigins ship, and otherwise have nothing set up currently. Tomorrow, we also have Veterans Day at our high school, so that will go from roughly 8:00 to 9:00 a.m. And otherwise, that's all that I have for you.
Any questions? Thank you for being here. As always, great report.
Thank you all so much.
All right, next agenda item is work-based learning. Lisa Murray Schreik, our work-based learning coordinator and business and marketing teacher, will provide an update and answer any questions.
I was really hoping I didn't have to go after you, Jack. I was really hoping there'd be somebody else in between us, but here I am. So thank you to the school board for having me here today. Thank you, Mr. Anderson, for allowing me this opportunity to tell you of all of our work-based learning programs that will roll out at St. Francis High School next year with our career seminar course. So just to make sure we have some common language, what is a work-based learning program? Oh, you were... Okay, there we go. Maybe I'll stand right here. So what our goal with this program is to connect classroom learning with real job, real on-the-job training, job experiences, we could say. So students will apply what they learned in the high school classroom to the work setting, and we hope that our students will gain skills the employers want them to have. So maybe they'll find the skill that our student does not have out there on the workforce, and the employer will help our student develop that skill set. So students will also be able to develop their employability skills. So I knew this word as soft skills, but the new buzzword out there is employability skills. So we will continue to help our students develop their employability skills. Who is this program intended for? Our program will be intended for students that would like to go down the CTE pathways, so like business, BACs, health, tech ed, really anybody. But we really want to make sure that we are finding places for these students pursuing these pathways. So we want to help our students gain work experience before graduating from St. Francis High School. We are looking for students that have maintained good attendance, have professionalism at St. Francis High School, and they will be able to continue those behaviors out there on the work site. We are looking for students who are motivated, responsible, and ready to take charge of their future to determine what do I really want to do after high school. We also will need our students to have reliable transportation. They will be able to leave St. Francis High School early, and they will be asked to get to the work site, and they will need to provide their own transportation. So program benefits. So one of the things with this is we will allow our students to earn high school credit while they are on the job earning their work experience. We obviously will help our students develop their resumes with their work experience, because they will be able to use this as documentation. We also think that students will be able to have stronger college and scholarship applications, and that will be documenting their work experience. We have found here that hopefully that students will discover what they like, but it's also important that we hope to also identify what students don't like. So what don't I want to do after high school, and maybe check some things off as well. So I actually was able to attend the ACT meeting before this, and I was able to really connect quickly with some industry professionals, and I actually learned a couple of things in just my 20 minutes there. And so we will allow our students to connect with professionals in their industry of choice as well, opening doors for them. So in the work-based learning program, it's really cool. There will be a collaboration between the student, myself, and the employer. So we'll all set employee goals. We hopefully will have all the students grow while out there on the workforce. So before a student can go out into the work-based learning program, we need all of our students to complete a career seminars course. What is this? In this class, we will expose our students to inventories. This will help identify the students, their strengths, their abilities, their skill sets, and that will give them at the end of the list of careers that will help them identify, here are some career opportunities for you. So we will take some time to research those careers. We will also take a look at, do you need to go to college to get this career? If you do need to go to college, what type of college do you need to go to? A trade school, a four-year college, or can you just do an apprenticeship? So again, making sure our students are equipped with that college knowledge if that is needed for their career choice. Part of the requirement of this class as well is making sure that all of our students have on-the-job safety training. So some of the big buzzwords that we will cover in this would be like OSHA, labor laws, employee rights. Again, we are hopefully developing those employability skills, AKA soft skills, with our students as well. Again, we are going to help our students develop resumes and cover letters. So at the end of this program, every student, every single student will have a professional draft resume and cover letter that they can use with whatever they are choosing to do next after high school. We can also team up and do some industry tours, some college and career fairs, and job shadowing if the students would like to do that. Part of my release in my school day will be making sure that I've set up opportunities for students to get out and experience these things, if they would like to do that. So the staffing impact, how will this impact our current staff at St. Francis High School? Right now, I am serving as a full-time business and marketing teacher. So I would move into a dual role. So I would be a half-time business teacher and a half-time work-based learning coordinator. I believe Mr. Anderson has planted this seed, or have you talked about the 1.5 position?
Not officially. We haven't discussed the possibility of internships or work-based learning with the board, but I haven't spoken about it in particular yet. That is what I talked to you and Mr. Austin about.
Perfect. So I will just hear, since I have the platform for one second. We would ask that you maybe the board considers adding a 1.5 in the business and marketing department, so that would allow us to keep our current staff, and so we don't lose any classes that we're offering our students right now. However, I'm going to ask the board to think about doing a 1.0 business teacher. And the reason behind that is, next year, our sophomores will need to take personal financial management to graduate from St. Francis High School. So we are looking at about adding seven sections to the high school. Who's going to teach those classes? So I believe that is a good fit in the business and marketing department, because if you are aware, we are, CTE salaries are able, we are able to recoup 35% of our CTE salaries through Perkins dollars. So it is cheaper to hire a business teacher than a math teacher or social studies teachers, because it's a CTE licensure. So 35% of our funds can be allocated through Perkins dollars. So what are your questions for our work-based learning program? Okay.
I have a question. So can teacher or can students be paid for the work that they're doing and receive high school credit?
Yes. And I think that's where most of our students will want to go. It can be a paid or unpaid program. I mean, I'm going to be real, I think the students are going to want a paid position. So that's where I see our student findings probably going, but if they don't want a paid, and they just want to get out there and know a work experience, they can do that, either or.
Is this something that they have to line up through you, through certain people, or can they line something up on their own and work through you?
It can be both. So right now, we have an application process. That's what we're directing right now at the high school. I'm working with Mr. Thompson, who's overseeing this program, or this committee along with Mr. Austin, and the counselors. And so we'll ask them, do you have a job? Do you want to use that job experience for the work-based learning program? Great. No, I don't have a job. That would be part of my duties as well, helping the students get placed into a work field. Do I call people or are you calling people?
Sorry about that. No Vikings fan calling.
Is there criteria to jobs that they can have, like promotions, staffings, or family businesses? What's a criteria for what companies to apply to?
Growth. They have to be able to have growth. And so we'll really open it up to anything that is to make sure that we have an agreement between the student, myself, and the employer that they're willing to take them in and work with them. One of the areas that is extremely hands-off, because it's the state of Minnesota, will, they will not allow students to work in construction. So that is an immediate no, and that's a state law, and that's because it's unsafe, they say. So just really any place that we can make sure that the student is going to have employability skills and continue to grow on working, what do they want to do in their future?
Okay, and then obviously we've got to follow labor laws, so we possess seniors and seniors?
So right now, we are going to target just seniors. So we just hope to roll this program out next year. So we just won't target our seniors, seniors, with the person that I'm working with for my licensure. You talked about maybe starting a little bit smaller and making sure that CD not have a bright foot. So we feel like the seniors would be the best. In time, do we want to open it up to the juniors? Is there room for that? Absolutely.
Is there hour restrictions, like the hours that they work, if we can do the E qualification program?
A minimum of 10. We'll set our program enough that was a decision that a recommendation that I was giving to me. So we'll ask our students, they have to work 10 hours a week to be in the program.
Is it every day?
They can decide. They could get all their hours done on the weekends if they wanted to. They get to decide when they want to work those 10 hours.
So they can still be full-time class, give those credits outside on the weekends if they wanted?
Yes. So the student could be done at, it was school like by noon if they wanted to be, and just work on the weekend. We are, this program will allow them to have that flexibility that we're seeing a lot of students want, especially after coming out of COVID and becoming online learners. They like this flexibility in their school day, and this program will give them that flexibility.
I'd love to say to you, as a former small business owner, I hired a lot of kids that were fresh out of high school. Only in my mind, it was a thing that you did not know.
Correct. And this will be a lot, lead to to work with the employers like yourself, why do that? And then what are you seeing that the students need, and how can we have a discussion in our classroom as well? So that's another, that's what's really cool about this. I'm working with the employers to make sure we're continuous this conversation, getting back to our classrooms. How are we helping these students out? What do they need to know to be successful on the job?
And is there grade requirements? Like do we have to continue to meet like certain grade levels in our involvement with the program? Because we want their actual GPAs to be affected by trying to empower requirements.
Right. So are you looking at the GPAs moving forward then? So right now, they would earn a credit, so they're earning a credit. I guess I haven't really talked through what the letter grade would be, like what they need to do that with a letter grade?
I mean, like the rest of their classes, because it's a senior-class, like obviously they have other classes, but they have to maintain the rule that you keep your GPA up, but you can't lose credit or GPA in regular classes to try and get these hours.
And I don't think we will. We're going to make sure that these students, if you saw that they have that professionalism, are you doing what you're supposed to be doing in your classrooms at St. Francis High School, and making sure we are. And that's a conversation too, because we want to make sure that these students can be trusted going down into the workforce too. If they're starting to fall behind, that's my job. I need to go up there and talk to the teacher like, hey, what's going on with Johnny first hour today?
Okay, cool. Sorry, I had multiple questions. Thank you.
I could have another question. Could you describe the organization that you're working with to kind of get all the background information and legal agreements and those kinds of things?
Can you name drop the north? Yeah, are you going to struggle too?
Yeah.
North country.
Something in the northwest Minnesota exu, or something like that?
So I'm working with this gentleman named Dustin, so I just, it's an online program. I could come into this program with a CTE background, so I didn't have to do as much. But I had to go to a CTE boot camp. I learned a lot more about my industry that, you know, the profession I'm already doing. So part of the program is just going to make sure that I understand the documentation of all this, what you can and cannot do. So one of the things that I've learned is that you have to have a training agreement. So no student can be out there on the workforce until they've done a training agreement with me. And so I actually have a, and that's in the document that we will share with you as well. So this is like making sure that the student has reliable transportation. Do you have insurance? Because we want to make sure if the car incident does happen, that the student will be covered by their car insurance. That we have our insurance as well, so like if I go out and see my student working and I slip and fall, that our school district would cover that liability. And then obviously, the employer's insurance as well. So just documentation, making sure that we have all of that. What else would you want to add?
Yeah, and I'll just, I'll add to that. We are receiving the service for nothing, because this entity, we can't remember the name, the director, by the way, went to Concordia College as well. And, but he's well-known in the northwest part of the state for doing some innovative things. And so they received a substantial grant, and they've been providing the service to a number of schools throughout Minnesota. And so by chance, we, you know, aligned with that group. So they're providing it at no cost to us, even though we're not part of the co-op.
It's Perkins dollars. I asked. I asked where, I'm like, who's paying for this? Because the first service fee was cut off. I'm like, where does that $3,500 for me to get this endorsement come from? And it's Perkins dollars. So I talked about that before. So yeah, Perkins is covering the endorsement for me to go and get this training.
And it's a highly reputable group that has done the research. They've worked with the state, and we're going to rely on them for a lot of the questions that will definitely come up.
Yeah. So my coordinator, Justin, has been absolutely fabulous. If something comes up, I've reached out to him. We do some webinars. We get on, and we do weekly webinars. They're, well, now I'm done with my licensure. Now I just need to reach out to Pelspeed for the endorsement. But he's like, let me know as your questions come up. Yeah, this year, it might be a little bit more next year. So it's not just I'm getting my endorsement and I'm walking away. I definitely have a support network out there.
I just have to make a comment. Say, this is like super needed in the world right now. You hear so many people saying, no one's ready to work, no one wants to work, they don't have the skills to do this. Like, so there's plenty of smart people, and then they come into the job. I just think, I love the erudite, I love the everything you're holding them to. Not to mention, I'm just such a huge fan of what you do, Mishrag, and your DAKA and everything business. It's, I think, I mean, everything's important, but I don't know if anything has, I've seen nothing that has contributed to the growth of my son in particular, outside of DAKA. This is just real-world skills. And also the fact that we now have to teach the financial literacy, that totally makes sense. I would be in complete support of this. People can learn that, like, it's really, and we just talked about this, it's not what you make, it's what you spend, and that comes with financial literacy. And you can end up being happy and doing well by yourself and living with your, in your means, and you can have a good life. So I'm in full support of this, and your ask for the extra FTE and such like that. And thank you for presenting.
Of course, it's a long time I've been here up here. Especially going after you.
If I could add one more thing, Mr. Burr. The reason that we wanted to have Lisa Murray give the presentation tonight is to kind of follow up on previous presentations that we've had over the last couple of years, so we could explain the progress that we've made. This model is much better than what I had envisioned at the start of the discussion.
I would have.
Yeah, no doubt. And I want to thank Mr. Austin, Mr. Thompson, Ms. Bobey, and of course, Mishrag, for their work on developing it this far. The thinking is that for the first year, it would be a half-time coordinator position that would be built into the budget. So we aren't looking for a specific board approval, because we're working to the budget, and then when the budget is approved, then, you know, be offered. And I just thought it was really important to have, you know, an increase in the FTE for the high school instead of forcing this program that would result in a reduction somewhere else. So that's why we set it up this way.
Yes. I just have a quick question. How are you going to gauge success of the program? Is that going to be by student interest, their enrollment, performance? I mean...
I think all of it. I guess I don't technically know that. Like, right now, we don't even know how many students are going to want to be in this. We had a peer leader meeting tonight, and they said, students are already asking about this program. And I go, how do they already know about it? You know, I'd be like, I haven't talked about this yet. So I don't know if there's people attacking, and they are crying about this. So we don't know how many, we don't know how many students are going to want to be in the program. We're anticipating a lot of students. And we have also, I've worked with the counselors, have an application process as well, to make sure that we're getting our right students, that these are the students that are ready to go into the workforce, and again, can represent our school well, but then also learn out there. And then one of my jobs as a work-based coordinator is getting out there and connecting with the employer. How is the student doing out there? Have they met all the skills that you'd like them to do? Okay, well, what's next? Can you push the student to the next level at this employment place? No, I'm not. Well, then that goes back to, well, now we need to find this kid a different job. So that's what we'll do. And that's why I said it's collaboratively working with all three of us to make sure that there's continuous learning going on the job, and I'm not just showing up just doing the same thing. You know what I mean? Does that answer your question?
Yeah, I know what you mean. I appreciate that. You're investing a lot of you in this program.
Right. In those, maybe not, having those connections with them. So, I'm hopeful. It goes well.
Go on to questions. Thank you for presenting, and thank you for the detailed work that you've put. We have a lot of questions, as we always do, so, and you have answers to all of them. So that means you're not just, you're not just looking now, you've got the big picture for it. So thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Excited to see the progress. All right, our next agenda item is elementary school reports. For the first time, we'd like to welcome two different principals in front of us. Carla Winter for St. Francis Elementary, and Jamie Carpenter for Cedar Creek, as well as Melissa from East Bethel.
If I could just quickly introduce the two new principals again. As you said, we have Carla Winter, the principal at St. Francis Elementary. Most recently, she worked in Chisholm as a pre-K through 6 elementary principal. She also has some experience working as a director of teaching and learning in Winona. So we're thrilled to hire her as a principal. Similarly, Jamie Carpenter was most recently an assistant principal at Malaca, where she served as an assistant, well, an assistant principal for secondary schools in Malaca. And just got to tell you, they are both residents of the school district. And we don't require residency, and we should require it, but I did ask them for permission to at least share that publicly. And we're thrilled to have you on staff.
No, we're lucky we're all the same.
Yeah.
We wouldn't have been able to survive or last three months.
You're the reason they came, right?
With that, good evening. Chair of our members of the school board, Superintendent Anderson, and your staff, the community members, on behalf of my elementary principal colleagues. We look a little different than we have in the past, right? I usually am accompanied by your gentlemen. Now, we call ourselves some ladies, right? You know, it's a big task. It's always hard to come up and really summarize the work that we're doing in our elementary schools in a period of five to 10 minutes. So we are going to try, hit out the most critical things that we're doing. Obviously, we know you're going to ask questions if you have any, and we really encourage you to come out and see some of these things in action, because a lot of it, it just doesn't really make sense until you see the practices. So with that, I'm going to kick us off with literacy. As you may know, this is where my former life was in literacy. And so I'm excited to share with you some updates in there. So before I get started, I need to give a big shout out to our elementary literacy coaches, Catherine Helms and Amy Barr, who have been instrumental in everything I'm about to share this evening. Oh!
Vanessa.
Oh, I'm so sorry. See, I get so passionate. So Catherine and Amy have been instrumental in all the training pieces, timing for implementation, doing the research, modeling for teachers, and so without them, so thank you for that investment in the coaches. None of this would really be possible without their work. So with that, there we go. Vanessa, you've heard a lot about letters, and I'm not talking about A, B, C, D, E, F, and G, right? We're talking about L, E, T, R, S, which is the Language Essentials for Teachers of Reading and Spelling. So as you know, last year, in the last school year, most, the majority of our teachers completed units 1 through 4. So letters is that eight-unit kind of training for teachers, which is aligned to the science of reading. So last year, they really focused all of their PD on those early foundational reading skills, like phonological awareness, print concepts, and then basic to advanced phonics skills. Now, this year, in year two, the majority of them are focusing their professional development on units 5 through 7. So now we're moving into kind of more higher-level skills, like word analysis, Greek and Latin roots, things like that. So things that are getting a little bit more high-skill level. We're also focusing a lot more on spelling, vocabulary, and then the comprehension pieces as well. So our teachers, again, for their Q-Cop, for their professional development that they're doing in the district, the majority of those professional development hours are coming in our letters training. So we've got a great training plan for that. And I will tell you, we are seeing evidence of these practices happening every single day. So the investment, doing that, I know it's a requirement, but we're seeing it. For example, little things, like we used to say, as a reading teacher myself, I used to say when we're teaching letter sounds, I might say, okay, so the letter K says "k". Well, the letter K actually doesn't say anything. Now we use a phrase such as, the letter K spells, or the letter K represents the sound. So there are things that you might not notice, but when you attend the training, you notice it. So we are seeing those things happening in our classrooms every day, which is super exciting. The next big piece, two new implementations of programs that are both aligned to the science of reading and the letters training your teachers are doing. So I put them side by side. One of them, UFLY Foundation. So UFLY, as if we don't have enough acronyms in this, the world of education, but it's just University of Florida Literacy Institute, their foundations curriculum. Our program is what we're using in grades K through 2 this year. In grades 3, we're looking at Bridge to Read. So we're implementing Bridge to Read. And that one actually comes out of a certain Minnesota, which is built on the work of the Minnesota Reading Core Program, if you're familiar with that. I know East Bethel and Cedar Creek are both Minnesota reading core sites right now. And so you will see some of those things being implemented. But both programs have a very solid research evidence base behind them, and it's really focused on those foundational literacy skills, which is all about the science of reading. And so the students are getting daily lessons that are systematic. Systematic, what does that mean? It's structured, it follows a plan, it's step by step, and it goes from the more simple or basic concepts to the more complex. Explicit, explicit just means it's teacher-directed, right? They're providing direct instruction through clear modeling and a lot of practice. And so both of these programs, side by side, they follow these things. And then engaging, it's fun to watch. Come on out, we'll have you watch a lesson. They're really fun to see the students really getting into the lessons, because there are lots of activities the students are doing. So again, the UFLY was implemented in kindergarten through 2nd grade, and the Bridge to Read in 3rd grade. And again, both programs are very, very highly aligned to the science of reading. So we just have a few pictures we want to share, because we want to see our kids, right? And so the picture on the left, I just have to tell you a funny story about this. So this is a kindergarten classroom at East Bethel. And I had to go help a student in this classroom one day. He had lost an item. He was very upset about losing this item. So we went on a hunt for the item, okay? He's five years old. It's a big deal when you lose your stuff, right? So we walked out of the classroom, we came back in, and he saw this class on the carpet. It was actually this particular lesson. And he looked at me, he said, oh, we're learning about fricatives today. And I said, you're learning about fricatives today? And a fricative, if you don't know, they're teaching them what the different, how to make the letter, the sound formation in your mouth. So fricative is just a consonant that's made by friction in your breath, like blowing up the sound. So like the letter F, or TH. But a five-year-old's talking to me about a fricative. And yesterday, we learned about fricatives, and he nasals in his mouth. I'm like, wow, this is, this is pretty neat that our five-year-olds are talking about this stuff. So again, we're seeing these things. The picture in the middle, again, this is in Nicole Harris' classroom. But this is, if you see the little heart underneath the letter, so they're learning your regular high-frequency words. So the heart is just that, it's something that they haven't learned yet. It's might be in a regular spelling pattern, something like that. They just haven't learned that the E at the end of this word would make a long E sound, because they're in first grade and this time of year, they don't know that yet. So we just have to learn it by heart at this time. So we just have to learn it by heart at this time. So these are the kinds of things that we're seeing every single day in our classroom. The picture on the right is in Angie Brown from second grade classroom. They were learning about the floss, the F L S Z rule, sometimes referred to as the floss rule. So this is really about teaching kids spelling rules. So if a one-syllable word ends in a letter F, L, S, or Z and has a short vowel in it, then when you're spelling the word, you double the final consonant. She asks her kids, what's the floss rule? They'll tell you because they know what it is now. So a lot of focus on those things. The next two pages, this is just, I could go on and on about this because, because I'm passionate and you can't tell. Um, but this is just another of this, a third grade classroom Bridge to Read lesson, same kind of things. If you see the teacher modeling on them, there's actually a script that they follow, scripted lesson. This is the explicit part to make sure that every student, no matter what classroom that you're in, you're getting the same instructional, um, guidance with them. And then they're doing the kids a practicing. So this happens to be, uh, what we would call a C V C E. So a consonant vowel, consonant and a, uh, E at the end of the word. So they're practicing words that end in those sounds. So again, lots of exciting things when it comes to literacy in our schools. There's one other thing I want to talk about. Actually, I should let one of you to talk about this, this was really cool.
Go for it.
You are just excited, go. So for the first time, so as you know, all three of our sites have received Title I and Access funding. So we have intervention teachers at all three sites. And for the first time in my years in the district, we had a combined Title I Access Family Engagement Night that was held on October 28th at St. Francis Middle School. So across all three elementary schools, our intervention teachers planned activities that were aligned to the reading or math interventions that they do. The families came out, they got to play the games. While Carla and I did a presentation for families about what is Title I? What does that even mean? What is Access? What does that mean? What does that look like? What are my rights as a family, as a parent when my student is receiving intervention services? So we did a little presentation for the families. The kids came to play games, they went home with a ton of books, a ton of resources. We had some pizza, we had 280 RSVPs. It was amazing, the feedback from the surveys that we sent out. They're like, yes, we want more of this, let's do this more of this. So it was really neat, it was a great night. It was a great night. So, okay, I'll be done now.
Yeah, and just to add on to that a little bit too, I have students that walked down the hall. They're like, remember when I saw you at game night? And it was at Access night where they were playing learning games. And then the parents came and played learning games. And they're like, we have this game at home, I didn't think I could use it this way. And it just, it brought this whole new experience for the family and the kiddos all to come together. It was such a fun, it was awesome.
I think you're out. Who's up on math?
Is that you, Ms. Carter? You're like, it's a lot of pressure. So I get math. So with our math, we have been transitioning. So there are new math standards coming out. They will go into effect on the new testing cycle. I think it's next year, next grade year. There's some math.
Well, we have to roll them out at a time.
Okay, so we're rolling them out slowly as it goes. But some of the things we have been doing is the structure of what our math lessons look like. So our math lessons all start with something called a daily numbers talk, which has been very exciting to see. They start all the way in kindergarten where our kindergartners are talking about what is this number? How does this number, how is it made up? How does it look? All the pieces all the way up to fifth grade where now they're looking at equations and they're talking about how do I solve this equation? And then they'll ask a peer, how do you solve this equation? Well, how do you see that piece? And they're doing all of these concepts and conversations that the students are having with each other and the teacher sits there and helps facilitate it. And watching the kids move from the younger grades and as they've been going up now, doing these number talks for the past few years, you see that engagement and the excitement and the confidence in how they're describing, how they do it. Um, I was in a second grade classroom the other day observing and they were talking about how, well, I didn't see it that way. I used it this way and I use this framing. Or, oh, I didn't even think of doing it that way. I did it this way because this is how my brain thought. And it's a whole dialogue between the students about different ways to do the same concept. So there isn't that rigid, like math is just done one way. It's how does your brain understand it? And then the kids are kind of teaching each other in their own language, which has been really exciting to see. So every lesson starts with our daily number talk, just about five to 10 minutes. And then we do move into our core instruction, which is developed based off of the standards and our scaffolded lessons planned throughout the year to meet standards. Within that, we also do some testing and assessments from our VASBRIDGE testing. And with that, we do some of the automaticity pieces and everything. And then we go into tier two interventions, which is where our teachers will take small groups of students and work on individual needs based on what our data results are showing or what students are struggling with during the lessons. This is done sometimes during the actual lesson time or during what we call win time or it's our what I need time. And they might get that extra little scoop of whatever practiced skill that they're missing. So, and then if we, um, so then if we look at the data for our number talks and how our automaticity is turning out, um, in 2022 is kind of where we started the number talks. We're, and if you look as the data goes across years and these students continue to develop these number talks and the understanding of the process of math in that deeper level and the actual conceptual understanding of how math works and how numbers work, we're starting to see that growth in the data as well. So we're starting to really see that correlation between these number talks and our students' performance in their, um, automaticity testing. So, and then these are some of the new standards. So they are kind of shifting to that conceptual understanding of math. So it's not just the, this is the equation, you learn to solve the equation. It's actually understanding the pieces of the equation that make it into what it is and the pieces that, um, help develop the problem into bigger thinking concepts. And so it starts all the way in kindergarten with our math talks and it just builds. And every year it scaffolds and builds up until we get into the more advanced expressing and repeated reasoning and all of those pieces. So these standards are what we will be slowly rolling out a little bit at a time the next few years. And, um, but our teachers are already fully embracing them as they look at their curriculum and prepare their lessons. So it's just been really great to see this development in our students. And I can say even in my own kiddos, um, we've been in the district four years now. And when we moved in, they were not confident. So my youngest is in third grade and I remember him being so upset the first year he had to do these number talks and he was so intimidated. He'd always just say, what he said, what he said. And he never, and now you sit there and you watch my class and they have things to say, even if it's what somebody else said, but they say it and how it works. Like you, I've seen it in my own philosophy and evolution of how these number talks are impacting kids. So it's just super exciting. And then we have a few different photos. So up in our top left corner is Mrs. Wood, second grade class. And then, um, on the top right is one of our kindergarten teachers, Mrs. Fields. And then down in the left is another kindergarten teacher just working on those counting and getting the movement breaks built in. So they might jump, they might dance, they might, whatever it is, just working on those counting pieces. And all the way up into some of our higher level math curriculum. So it just, all of it is very, um, accessible to students in all the different ways that it's presented.
I am totally excited about math, by the way.
Um, another focus area that we have in our buildings, we wouldn't be able to do math and reading if we didn't really work and spend a lot of time on culture and climate in our building. And as an acronym, again, S E L means social emotional learning and our P B I S is positive behavior intervention and support. So along with these areas, we are able to build up students and teach students, um, these super important skills in order to be able to sit down and do math and reading. One of our big focus on social emotional learning is our second step curriculum. And students get this, um, have several units. And the focus really is improving students' school success. How can I be a good listener? How can I be active listening? So it, uh, in the units, it supports that. We look at social competence, you know, how we're getting along with others? How do we treat other people? And then really overall wellbeing of our students. And so our, our teachers really have put a lot of time and effort in our second step. As principals, there's also a support piece for us that we can support that. Uh, as we look at zones of regulations, uh, we might ask a student what color they're on today. And we have red, blue, yellow, uh, and green. And those go along with the emotions. So we can tie those colors to students' emotions, work on some self-regulation tips and strategies for them. Along with that, we have You're Not Alone Therapy Dog Program and it's newest in my building, I believe. And they will see a picture of our, our pets and their owners in just a minute. But that's really been an exciting thing to have those dogs around the building. Um, at East Bethel, they're doing a Make a Difference and you can nominate, students can nominate students or students can nominate staff for making a difference in their lives. They get recognized, fall down to the office. Um, so again, teaching students those skills. We also do an end of date with Mr. K, that's Dr., Mr. Kruger. He, um, does some interaction with students that have had a successful day and were able to regulate themselves throughout the day. Uh, we also have our P B I S and all of the buildings have different things that we do. Um, students are given for being respectful, responsible, and safe. They're given tickets and we draw names monthly. Some of us, we do things a little bit different. I have assemblies at my building, I'm not sure if you guys.
We do them at every track, I think yours are every month.
Every month, yep. Um, some of the schools do good, good news calls of the day. So they're calling home for those positive behaviors. Uh, my students are asked to come on morning announcements with me. They sure like to tell their jokes, but that's a reward if they were chosen as the unbelievable winner. Lunch buddies, we, our cafeteria folks, they set up, they do this all on their own. They set up a little lunch table with our buzz and they make it really special for them, stuffed animals, pizza parties. So we celebrate those things, those successes with our students. We have Buzz up there in the corner and I won't reveal who he is, but this was one of our, our months that we had unbelievable winners. So, um, it's just an exciting time. We hype it up and we really want to, um, share those, those positive things with our students and, um, focus on that. I know at some of the buildings, we have, um, the fancy lunch, I believe you have that in your, or you do that in yours? Okay. Um, the Saint's Pride Bingo, looks like that's happening at your building.
Yeah.
So, um, we just try to promote all of those wonderful things. And then we do, we have You're Not Alone Therapy Dog Program. We have Melinda and Murphy there on the left. And then in my building, I have Karen and Breez. And the 31st of October was the first day, um, they came into our building. Did you guys get started a little bit earlier maybe?
Yep.
So very exciting to bring the dog and their owner along. And then here's that Making a Difference program, um, where I have kids nominate kids and students nominate teachers. So I think this is really special to, to celebrate all those great things that are happening. And then I, I feel like all of us in all of our building, that, that big word of kindness that we're promoting kindness, that we would want our kids to be successful. And one way they can do that is really lifting each other up and lifting the staffs up and showing kindness throughout the building. So it's, yeah, it's great to be, to be part of that and, um, spread that throughout. With that, do you have any questions for us?
Any questions or comments? They nailed it so well. No comment.
No comments. It's working. Um, for starters, welcome to the district. So excited to have you guys. Ms. Kitty. Do not laugh, Kitty. I've been volunteering in your school for years. I can personally attest to the passion that you put into your dad, compassion he gives to these kids. I watched him grow out of regular faces. You are the reason people like me are proud to be in this district, okay? And I also want to thank you personally again and publicly for your personal, everything you did with the bus. I really appreciate it. It means a lot to us and I just want you to hear it again. So thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, um, I've got a couple. So you guys see the beautiful wall over there with stars and Mr. Williams, thank you for saving me. District-wide hopes and goals, right? I try to talk about them at the end of every, uh, board meeting, but you guys have it so I need to talk about them right now because of what you guys just presented. But the ones that, that were highlighted for tonight, uh, build confidence in students. Absolutely, everything you just showed us is exactly what that's doing. That's reaching folks and goals from our, our staff. And then no kid left behind. Again, you guys showed us tonight what you're doing and implementing. And I absolutely love that it's a team, uh, coming together because you guys are sharing, uh, the experiences across. And we all know how important that is and how happy Heidi Critchley is when all three years. And all of these schools have the same expectations when they come together. So thank you for doing that. We are seeing it. Uh, we are seeing that progress and we're seeing that impact. So thank you for doing that. And then the last thing is thank you for the invite to all of us. Please get out there, uh, if you can. A reminder to all of us, shoot any one of them an email. Uh, they will gladly welcome us into the building, but give them a heads up that we're stopping in. Shoot them an email so they know what our plans are, their work around us, uh, which is really nice. But please, uh, reach out to them so they know they're coming and they can help. Because if not every class is teaching everything at the same moment, uh, if there's something specific you want to see, they'll help us be able to see that. So, uh, thank you all for that tonight. Mr. Anderson, do you have any?
We picked, uh, three great instructional leaders, so thank you. It's gonna make a difference tomorrow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next agenda item is Student Services Report. Our Director of Student Services, Deb Parsons.
Welcome.
Provide an update.
Good evening. Um, I do want to say thank you for those that have stopped by my office and spent some time with me and gone over a lot of these things. So I will keep this one kind of like me short and sweet. So, um, we have had some changes in the program. We downs, downsized by one program supervisor. So we shifted some responsibilities. One was the Genesis Program, which was our, is our alternative to suspension program. It is run through the building next door. So the logical shift was to have Ben, right, take over as, and it is a Gen Ed program. So that was a logical shift. So he has taken over the Genesis Program for this year. And now I am overseeing Ben, so it's kind of all under me, but still shifted him. The Restore Program is also housed over there. Uh, that is the shift for there. That is now under Bridgette Brown. She started there and then when East opened up, she needed to give back her full attention. And now she's coming back to work with Restore. One of the things we really wanted to do this year is increase the communication from the Restore Program to the parents. So we've implemented a three-week check. Every three weeks, the case managers in Restore reach out to parents regardless, um, you know, the progress or lack thereof. So parents are not surprised when we need to make a shift in programming. It is very, run very tight. At least every three weeks, parents get an update. That being said, the middle school, um, so elementary has a behavior program housed at East Bethel. Students in that program, once they hit middle school, we didn't have a setting three, which is, it's in their main building, right? If they had high behaviors, they went to the Restore Program or went to a setting two. So this year, to make the transition better, we have rolled out a setting three program right at our middle school. So it's a little bit softer of a change and more welcoming for the students. So it's not, oh, we're moving to a setting four, you get to continue with your setting three program. So that was a huge shift this year. We spent many days this summer getting it lined up and ready to go. So that's, um, little bumps here and there, but I feel that's getting off to a great start. We have some students that, um, like I said, it's done, moving straight to Restore or maybe they're in eighth grade and experiencing some bumps. They get to go to this, we call it reconnect, get back in connection with being regulated before moving them over to Restore. So I, I feel that's off to a great start. The next big thing we're working on is our transition from high school to T-15. We're trying to take out the feel, like I feel they should go, I feel this is going to be, to more data collected and there's, um, there's a decision tree. So it takes all the emotion out and it really, we are starting at ninth grade, the discussions, all the way till they're a senior. So again, take away the surprise, right? You aren't sitting at a I E. You aren't sitting at an IEP meeting, your student is a senior, and then the staff is saying, oh, we want them to go to the T-15 program. Everybody's on board from ninth grade all the way up. Crossroads Barnum and Crossroads East. Because the population, student population is, it fluctuates so much. We found out in some buildings are understaffed. And then, oh, a month goes by and now we're overstaffed. And it was back and forth. And it's really, it's a hard pill to swallow when we have to send the tuition billing to their home districts. And it's super expensive because all of a sudden we're overstaffed. So we worked really hard this summer on how can we share staff between the sites to keep the programming strong, expectations high, but be just more mindful on our staff and our resources. So one thing we did this year is we have two teachers. We have the language arts person who's housed at Crossroads East and the social studies person who's housed at Crossroads Barnum. One day a week, they swap spaces. So they're teacher record in both of their disciplines, but one day a week, the kids get to see them in person, ask questions. So we're sharing staff between sites to mitigate the cost for one, but keep the programming solid and expectations high. Some of the things for just program-wise that we've rolled out. Last year, we started Spedforms, which is a new platform for all of our special ed paperwork. It was a huge lift last year, and we had some hiccups along the way with staffing. And this smooth rollout that we were promised did not go as planned. So we now have a Tulsa imposition, and she is on fire. She watches every tutorial video that Spedforms has put out. She's out in buildings and she's helping people. So we're in year two, phase two, and it's back on track. It's looking much better, much tighter. We also launched our special ed website. So instead of having, we used to, welcome back, here's your binder, and it's this thick. And, and, okay, put some tabs here and here. Now it's all click of a button. It's on the website. It's updated live. If I make a change in my office, boom, it's changing on the website. So if MDE comes with a new decision, I get to change it and it's out there instantaneously. So that's been huge. Shout out to Rachel Hawkins, who works at T-15, is, she loves website stuff. I don't know, but she's doing great with that. The second thing we're doing, or second year with behavior intervention is MDE. Again, at the 11th hour says, oh, by the way, they need X amount of training. So we created, it was Bridgette Brown, Stacy Piker, and myself. We met and we said, how can we get this training implemented? So behavior interventionists are working through modules put out by MDE on trauma-informed, different behaviors, de-escalation. And I met with them this last, or day 172, our professional development day. And I was so stoked by the end of the session. They love the modules. They've learned so much. They were so excited to be doing this learning. So that really got me fired up. So I thought it was a great professional development opportunity, and they're just thirsting for more. So I think that's going very, very well. So you may know them as center-based programs, Life Skills, High Energy at the elementaries. What we wanted to do is have the grouping a little more flexible. So we changed it to specially-designed classrooms or SDCs. That allows us to group not by disability area, but by ability. And so the name itself changed so we could be a little more flexible and open to individualized program. It isn't based just on what the paper says or disability areas. It's the data, where are you at in your journey? And so that's rolled out this year. Apparently, I like rolling out new things every year, so that was for this year. And another thing we did, educational assistance, we, they have to be highly qualified. They have to be PCA certified, all of the things. So kudos to the HR department, who has really partnered with me. And we've come up with an onboarding process. We had a goal last year of getting, I believe, 95% of the EAs highly qualified by the end of the year. We ended the year at 98%. So pretty excited about that number. And over the summer, I worked with HR, handed it over. So now as they're hired, they don't even step foot into the classroom until they're highly qualified, PCA certified. So that has been a really big step. You know, I just, again, shout out to Amanda Leto in HR, who has really stepped up and helped with that. So a couple of things that we get to check off the list, we've completed these. So naloxone, that was a big thing last year. And how are we going to get it out to people? What are we going to do? Al Shalomani is the program supervisor who oversees anything that's not special ed, but is in our department. The naloxone fell on his plate. So he was able to get the storage. He's got labels. He's got it out to buildings. He's created the check plan, like he checks the boxes once a week, does all of the things. He also came up with the AED replacement plan. So we've got several across the district, and they're not cheap. So he's got, he's got a whole cycle of when they need to be replaced. So he's got it on a system now where two or three a year is all we need to replace. So it's worked out quite well. They also worked with the health, the school nurses to develop a clinic for vaccinations. Or if you choose not to be vaccinated, we need a notarized letter saying you're opting out. So somebody from every building is a notary now. So whenever there's parents there and they want to opt out, fill out the form at a notary onsite. So first in, what is the percentage that we want to be at?
For actual kids vaccinated in the MMR, the goal, the minimum goal is 95%. Right now, we're at 92.7%. So we have a ways to go. And then the expectation from the state is that we have 100% of all of our kids either vaccinated or who have submitted one of those forms. And we're not there yet.
Not there.
So that's, that's a concern because there could also be the expectation that they should not be in our school building unless one of those two things is in place. So that's something we may have to consider implementing or not. But I just want everyone here to be aware of that expectation, and we're not there yet.
But we're putting things in place to get us there. So, yep, the bigger picture items. Our department is working on standard operating procedures. So when I'm in the lottery and retired, somebody can step in and it will be all laid out for people instead of the crash course. Learn as you go. And then to couple with that, the onboarding process for the program supervisors to have it more buttoned up, more tight. We're doing some cross-training. So if one is gone, somebody can step in and fill their shoes. All right, any questions?
Ms. Humphrey.
On the vaccination situation, the 95% is that we want 95% of the people to be vaccinated? Or we want 95% of the people to either be vaccinated or give us the letter?
Yeah, I'll answer that. First of all, our health department has done a great job communicating the need and the importance of getting vaccinated for measles, mumps, and rubella. So they've, I think we've done a really, we made a strong effort to get that to happen. What Anoka County has told us at a recent webinar is that we need, we should have 95% of our kids vaccinated in order to have, you know, the dreaded word, herd immunity. And so that's the minimum threshold that will help minimize the risk of measles being, you know, in our school district. So that would actually be vaccinated.
Sure.
The expectation from the state is 100% of the kids need to be vaccinated or have that opt-out form unfiled. That's the expectation, and we're not at 100%. I don't recall what percent we're at right now, but we're short of that.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments?
Ms. Working. Deb, thank you. I really want to, I can only imagine how challenging it is, but I love hearing from you. Two things, when you brought up taking the feel out of it, I think that's fantastic. You are trying to push these kids into something based upon the way someone feels and want the water. Just taking the emotions out of it and having factual data on what's going to help. The implication of putting these kids in programs based upon their ability versus what it says on a piece of paper with my ass. Professional, fantastic. Thank you very much for your work.
Okay, I have two things. You said it very quietly, but I think it's one of the big tasks that you're working on. But to increase parent and guardian communication, that is a huge task. And I appreciate that you're taking that on specifically with Genesis and Restore. Because I know that's the majority of complaints that come up to the superintendent level and sometimes to the board level, is that communication piece. So thank you for taking that task on. And then the other thing, do you know what rollouts mean? It means that we're being proactive and not reactive. So thank you for all the rollouts that you're doing. We are becoming a proactive district in those things. So thank you for bringing that forward.
Mr. Rook, could I add one more thing? I think the biggest barrier, correct me if I'm wrong, Deb, the biggest barrier to having, you know, the program that we dream of with special services has to do with finding staff members. We are short of special ed teachers. We are short on special education assistance. It's an issue. And I know how hard Deb and her team and HR are working on this. But it does impact, you know, the environment in schools if we don't have the, you know, the staff levels. And so we recognize that we're doing everything we can to make that better. But I just want to say something that I think is probably pretty obvious to everyone because we've talked about it so often. So we're going to keep working and try to find as many licensed candidates for those teaching positions as possible and, you know, high-quality education assistance. We'll see what happens.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deb.
Our next agenda item is administrative reports. Who's in, Anderson?
This will be one of my shortest reports.
Four minutes or less.
It'll be less. Community Engagement Task Force is meeting as we speak. Information from those meetings are, well, they're linked. And I have the link in my administrative report. We encourage people to take a look, ask questions, challenge information, and provide whatever feedback possible. Recently, the task force did request to have a special meeting of the school board in January or February, depending on timing of things. So I just want to mention that. And then, you know, Mr. Burr, I'm sure will be reaching out, you know, at the right time to try to set something like that up. We've already talked about measles, so that's all I have.
So the task force, when they met in their first meeting, they said, hey, this isn't enough time for us. The second meeting, they were, we looked at a little more depth and said, hey, we're thinking January, maybe February, to come back to the board of the presentation. So the task force came up with that assessment, went, hey, we want more time to be able to dig in. Administration said that that's a good idea as well. So we'll work together on a, on a date and what fits best. And that would be the only topic we would have that presentation back. Mr. Shawna.
Is it that they need a special meeting just for time or why might it be separate meeting just for?
It would be for time and allow for focus for that group to come and brief us on their findings.
So more like a work session?
Yeah, yes, more like it'd be a work session. It'd be a formal update to us, no action at that time, but a formal update to us. Correct. And then just so everyone's aware, they had two meetings. They're in a third meeting right now. The first meeting for the Engager Group talked about the board chart that we gave them, introductions of the group, and then went over some expectations. And then some of the initial feedback that they received. Good numbers, they had good numbers in the second meeting. And I'm assuming they have good numbers tonight, we'll get a report back. The second one, they started their tours already. The POC was first, or the Learning Center was first, and the presentations of My Site IQ. They each get a login to My Site IQ so they can go in and actually be in-depth digging of our facilities that they want. It's a temporary, they won't have it forever, but they have it through the time frame they're on there. And then they review the initial findings through the community surveys. Those numbers will all be provided to us, how many were filled out, who filled them out, when they give the report. And then tonight, they started at the middle school, doing a tour there. Michael Hart from PMA, our representative, is giving a school finance crash course. They're all going to be experts on school finance. And then the city of St. Francis, I think, was on the agenda for tonight as well, to talk about what they're doing in the community for the group to see. So great stuff going forward with that task force. And I'm really excited with the engagement and the number. And I think you stopped in at one meeting, but it looked like good numbers there as well. Any questions or comments from Mr. Anderson?
With the vaccination numbers, is that still public for other schools? Do we have the idea how we compare to other districts?
I haven't seen actual numbers from other school districts. I'm sure that it's public information if we put in a request for a particular school, but I haven't seen anything statewide.
Okay, moving forward, agenda item six, action items. There are three action items for tonight. First one is the resolution, can't see returns of votes for the November fourth election. It's relating to the return of votes. You guys can see that in there, based on a special action. Mr. Anderson is here to answer any questions. Do we have any questions prior to a motion being made? Okay, is there a call to motion for approval of returns of votes asked, presented, recommended? Someone? Mr. Anderson, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Working. Any discussion on the motion?
Congratulations, Jessica.
It's coming back, Deb.
Just slow my thunder.
You raised your hand.
We haven't approved it yet, right? Any other discussion on that motion? All right, one.
Just a quick one. Thank you to the voters that went out and actually voted that day. I know there wasn't anything else on the ballot, so thank you to those that took the time to do that.
This will be a roll call vote, so signify by saying aye if you're in favor or nay if you're opposed. Mr. Humphrey.
I am in favor.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Mr. Shawna?
Aye.
Mr. Anderson?
Aye.
Ms. Working?
I am also in favor.
Ms. Wes?
Aye.
Aye, Wes. Aye, as well, in favor. Motion prevails. I'd like to welcome our new school board member officially. And Jessica Bachman, congratulations on the election results. And as you already are, go welcome to the board. All right, next agenda item is approval of Information Technology Department work agreement. Summary of the agreement is provided in the board packet. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Nelson is here to answer those questions. Any questions prior to a motion being made? See no questions. Is there a motion to approve the Information Technology Department work agreement? Ms. Working, thank you. Is there a second? Any discussion on that motion? Mr. Shawna.
Just want to thank Brandon for all the work he puts in on this. It's just a lot of work for him, especially without a business director here, just figuring out all those numbers. Also, thank you to the Tech Head Department for, among this negotiating committee. They just come so well-prepared and with realistic expectations. So thank you to those involved.
Any other discussion?
Second.
All right, if you are in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye, raise your hand.
Aye.
Aye. Motion prevails. Thank you. Next agenda item is approval of the Bus Driver Work Agreement. Again, summary is in the board packet. If you have any specific questions, Mr. Nelson is here to answer. Any questions prior to a motion being made? Seeing no questions, is there a call to motion to approve the Bus Driver Work Agreement?
So many.
Thank you, Mr. Working. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Shawna. Any discussion on that motion? All right, seeing no discussion, if you are in favor, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Aye. All right, aye. Motion prevails, seven to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is upcoming meetings and permanent topics. Any questions or comments on what is listed in the board packet? Mr. Humphrey?
Um, I, I believe we are going to revisit the library situation and I don't see it in any of this. Am I missing it or?
It's not on there. Um, I do have it as a list of, uh, potential work sessions, so I'll follow back up with you on that one, but I do have it on my list of work sessions.
Thank you.
And are, just a clarification, are you talking about, uh, staffing or what we?
Yeah, or even facilitating, like it seemed like our elementary schools were really, um, utilizing and it seems like our middle school and our high school wasn't and some people had been thinking about maybe consolidating and, uh, focusing where we use it and not spending money where we're not using it. Thank you.
Any other questions behind that agenda item? Uh, next agenda item is school board member report. Mr. Rook?
Uh, yeah, um, attended the, um, six minutes of work, but got in the EA negotiations, uh, kind of progress moving there. Excited to see Brandon getting these two everyone's close out and moving forward for us negotiations. Attended the, um, fall festival at the East Ballito Elementary School, uh, right around Halloween, super fun, community engagement. We had triple the turnout, I think it was, from last year. Um, Ms. Katie and her crew, the PTA, PTOR, we want to say, involved with that setup, did an awesome job. Uh, had a lot of fun with that. Um, that's all I got today.
Mr. Humphrey?
I'm working.
Thank you, Mr. Humphrey. I'm talking about it.
Um, I'm working negotiations and, um, I just wanted to thank all of you for helping me, uh, get the knowledge that I needed to join the board and, um, maybe my first book.
Thank you. Mr. Shawna?
Um, winter sports for this winter started, so girls' basketball started today, so now I've got a full calendar ahead of me. Um, I'm just bummed that this weekend I missed the play, so.
It was really good.
I'm sure it was.
Super good.
Probably the first one I'd missed in a while and I was bummed I couldn't make. And that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Shawna.
Um, meeting with teachers and EAs, both were very productive meetings, um, and also negotiations, multiple negotiations.
Thank you.
Um, curriculum meeting prior to this meeting here, really super excited about where we're going with the career pathways, um, program. Um, it's a lot going on, there's been a lot of work put into it and I'm looking forward to seeing how it, how it flows once it's up and running. Um, community ed, we have quite a few programs, there's discussion about, uh, having a survey done to see what types of programs a community would like to see. Uh, otherwise, I think that's all for that.
Thank you. Uh, same for me, ACT committee, uh, this evening, again, great, uh, participation and, uh, agenda items going forward and what the group is working on. We talked about the community engagement task force already and that's all I had on my list. All right, Deb? Yeah. Tomorrow morning, Veterans Day, uh, eight to nine o'clock at the high school. Uh, so early happy Veterans Day to all those that have served, uh, and continue to serve. We thank them for their service and appreciate all they have done.
And also the middle school had a great Veterans Day program this morning and, uh, it was really well-done because they really included, well, first, the, the main speaker was fantastic. Uh, there were lots of veterans there, um, their, their kids or grandparents, kids were really proud of them, you know, being in the audience. And then Heidi Critchley always involves as many students as possible, speakers, the band, the choir, it was just really well-done.
Yes, so with that, um, we had heard some of it tonight as well, but it's absolutely awesome, Mr. Anderson, the opportunities for parent involvement that we are seeing this year within all of the schools, from Veterans Day services to the pizza party night, uh, to all the other. Uh, pizza party night, all those pizzas got delivered to me. Uh, I was having a football banquet at the high school and we got all the pizzas, which was really wonderful. Really nice to find out that it wasn't just for pizzas. We ordered from Tasty's, they ordered from Navos and they all arrived to my, a lot of pizzas. We were happy when they saw what they were doing. Mr. Rook, you ready?
I was just going to s- comment on the middle school, I was at that Veterans Day thing too, and I've been going to that for a couple of years now. Boy, they, they really are making some breakthrough on, uh, how the students are kind of being respectful and that it goes to obviously everyone there, including the students, including the staff and obviously the, the leader of it all, Principal Critchley. But what a, just a wonderful, respectful group of kids and, I mean, it was a couple of years ago when it was like, like, you know, I felt like I was going to get shived there, but it's, it's great now, it's beautiful and they're really, really, there's been some huge movement in the right direction and I'm super impressed.
Yeah, if I could add to that, just, um, at the very beginning, you know, all the middle school kids were sitting down and then they stood up and it was kind of loud, you know, when they stood up. Apparently that's a big deal when you're a middle schooler, is that when you stand up, you have to talk. And, uh, Ms. Critchley went up to the podium and, uh, you know, cause it was the next phase of the, the program and she said, now it's time not to talk. And everyone stopped and it was silent after that. It was really impressive.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, now it is not time to talk. Item nine, adjournment. Thank you, Mr. Rook. The second thing is, and a discussion on that motion? Hearing that, all in favor of the motion to adjourn, signify by saying aye and raise your hand. Uh, motion prevails.
Board members, please don't leave before you see me, I need a signature on a resolution, please.
Yes, for the candidacy of the vote, it'll all be signed when we see it.